Thank you, Mayor. Well, I want to thank everybody for joining in for this evening's council workshop. And as always, the council member participation. This is one of our biggest workshops that we do provide. It's really a look back at the prior year and a look forward for the next five years. And so, we will kick off this workshop. We have John Troutman, our partner from Schenck, which performs our external audit. And he'll go over the management communications for this audit of 2017. The one note I will provide is the city will post our annual CAFR report tomorrow morning for our citizens and the people that would like to view that information. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Troutman.
Good afternoon. Again, my name's John Troutman, shareholder with Schenck. Kind of was here last year if you were here and assisted Tom Carmen, kind of taking over this process from him this year. So, again, it's kind of an informal conversation, just like Trina said, it's just a look back to 2017. So, to do that, we really kind of go through the management communication letter. That's one of about four documents that is part of the audit report package, part of your comprehensive annual financial report package. So, that's the document from our firm to the city council, really concluding the audit, summarizing the audit. We pull in a lot of financial information from the CAFR. It's a little bit easier to read and go through these few pages than a huge book. So, any questions throughout, interrupt me. Otherwise, at the end, if you want to talk about anything else from the CAFR or audit in general, certainly ask. So, again, keep this informal. So, if you want to follow along, we are in the management communication. Again, I don't know if that's in the back of the book or the front of the book or where that's located in your separate. Perfect. Perfect. So, past the table of contents is the management communication letter. And if you're familiar with this in the past, it looks very similar. It's very similar language from year to year. What you really want to take away from this is, you know, it kind of goes through different tiers of responsibility and what we followed and the standards and so forth. So, we really kind of summarize that as a service, just to kind of explain the audit process. The main takeaway is on page one and the letter itself is that you received an unmodified opinion in your CAFR, the huge CAFR, the many pages. All but about four of those pages is your financial statements prepared by your staff. We prepared the, really, the opinion in there. And again, that is compiled by us as a firm, but it's really your records in there. That opinion, those three or four pages, you did receive an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion on those financial statements. What that effectively means, and just to point out something there, that that's what you try to achieve from an external audit. That's what you want to achieve, so that's very good news. But what that really effectively means is that there's no material modifications to anything in that report. So, cover to cover, that's exactly what you want. Page two switches gears a little bit in the management letter and talks a little bit about internal controls. And again, oftentimes, you know, I pause here at every meeting like this and I just kind of explain the difference between an opinion on your financial statements and internal control, because oftentimes, there's a misconception that an external audit somehow issues an opinion on the effectiveness of an internal control. And that does not do that. No external audit does that. In order to do that, it would be virtually impossible, because we'd have to follow you around 365 days a year. So, what we do in the standards, how they're built to address internal control, is we have to really understand fully your internal control, your major internal control components of your finance and any major departments. And really, what we do then is we do certain tests that lead, that internal control leads to your financial statement assertions. So, the big takeaway there is we are required to really report any kind of deficiency that we see, any kind of, there's two deficiencies. There's a material weakness, which is material in nature, and there's a significant deficiency, which is lesser in nature. We didn't have any issues like that in your audit. And then, that's exactly what you would try to achieve in your audit. So, excellent job there. Bottom of page two goes through federal and state awards. Again, that is a separate piece of the audit process. You have to follow separate federal and state requirements there. Top of page three talks about accounting estimates. And again, what we're doing here is we're bringing in things that are contained in your financial statement, just an easy to follow thing. And I won't read every one of these, but they're bulleted there. And really, what those are, are major estimates in your financial statements. That's very common to have estimates in financial statement purposes or financial statement environment. And the takeaways there from an audit side is we did apply audit procedures to those estimates. So, even though you're estimating, they're not fact, they're not actual numbers, they're based on allowable estimates, we still audited them. So, I wanted to point that out, and that's why they're in there. Rest of page three and four really talk about any kind of issues we had in the audit. So, I always remind, you know, going forward, read these four pages, five pages of this letter, and you're going to find exactly how the audit went. So, it's kind of a nice concise thing. I'm happy to report that we didn't have anything unusual, didn't have anything that we deemed a difficulty or disagreement or anything like that.
Corrections?
Yes.
On that page three corrected or uncorrected misstatements, the net pension liability adjustment, was that up or down?
That is a good question. I do not know if it was up or down. I know we had to make an adjustment, $2 million. Do you remember, Trina? I do not.
I do believe it's down from prior year. And the reason it's actually in there, it's because Schenck actually prepares that entry for us. And because we do not perform the calculations, then it comes under a misstatement, but it's not because we have misstated anything, it's because we haven't participated in the preparation of that entry. And it's really due to the complexity. It's a new GASB that started last year, and so.
So, it's not an adjustment of a misstated amount?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, the terminology there is confusing. We have to show it like that, that's the standards require that terminology, but it is confusing. It's not necessarily something that you put in front of us and said, and we looked at it and said, "No, we're adjusting that, it's wrong." It is something that we go back and forth and say, "You know what? We're going to help you with that." And that's okay to do. I do that at a number, a number of clients. So, it's in here simply so you know that we did have to get involved in that one area. So, again, very, the net pension asset liability is GASB 68, as it's known, is probably one of the more complex in this entire report.
Thank you.
Yep. Good question. And that really concludes on page four, again, all of the other information we wanted to talk about, nothing of notation, other than that item, which I was just going to get to. That's great, great that we talk about that. Page five switches gears a little bit, and that brings in really your governmental fund balances. And like I said at the beginning, this really is just a service of, you know, it makes it a little bit easier to facilitate a discussion on this. These are directly from your balance sheet and your financial statements in your comprehensive annual financial report. So, we'll talk a little bit about, we won't read every one of these numbers, obviously you have many funds in the city, but the top underscore there, that's your general fund. So, that's your main operating fund of the city, considered by, you know, one of the more important elements of your governmental fund balances. So, you ended the year total general fund fund balance of $10,376,615, up, as you can see from the comparison on the right from last year, $9,461,000. So, if we look at the components of that fund balance, so there's really three components. You have $59,300 in non-spendable for inventory. And again, as a reminder, that's really, it's part of the $10,300,000, but it's an inventory or prepaid item, meaning you've spent that money already, but it's an asset on your books. It's for this year, you're in now, it's for 2018. So, it's not an expenditure. So, what we do is, the logical way to look at that is that $59,000 is really reducing or being subtracted off the $10,376,000. So, it's a hierarchy here. Then you have a sign, so you can kind of draw a line under, above that $86,000. And anything above there that would fall in, and you can look at last year, and you can see there was a couple of components, one being a fairly large dollar amount. This year, only $59,000. But anything above that line, you don't have any control over. You can't do anything with that money, it's gone already in a prepaid item or an inventory item. But below the line, so those bottom two numbers, that's really what you're carrying over into 2018. However, $86,870, you have a sign for subsequent years expenditures. So, you have earmarked that for expenditures that you are really going to spend in 2018. And you're allowed to do that under GASB 45. So, then, you're left underneath that with everything else. So, your unassigned fund balance of $10,230,000 is really the benchmark. That's what you carried over into the 2018 fiscal year we're in now, calendar year we're in now. And, you know, that's really what we look at when we say, "Well, how's the health of your fund balance?" And the bottom of page six kind of talks about that in a paragraph. So, that unassigned general fund fund balance of $10,234,45, when we compare that to your annual general fund budget, so if you take your budgeted amount and divide that into that, it comes out to a percentage, it's just a simple percentage. And that percentage happens to be calculated at 23.48%. So, 23.5%. And the industry, counties, counties, cities, large governments in general, are really benchmarked to have about two months of expenditures on hand. That's kind of the benchmark. Now, that is not a rule, that is not a, you know, a formal, you have to have this. There's many governments, many entities out there that have less, there's many entities up out there that have more. But that's a benchmark, that's a minimum. You have 23%, two months works out to about 16.67%. So, you're above that threshold. So, that's very good. You're in very good fund balance health there in the general fund as you carry over into 2018. Yes?
So, I noticed that Healthy Neighborhood Initiative is listed twice. At one point, we give a couple hundred thousand, and the other one is the $1 million on a different line.
Correct.
Why would we have that?
If you look, yeah, exactly, good question. A little bit confusing, but the way, if you look at the headings there, you have the same headings for fund balance as you do at the general fund. So, restricted is all of those. So, you have two elements in the Healthy Neighborhoods Initiative Fund. You have a restricted component of $201,000, and then you have a committed component of $1,013,000. So, again, the difference there being restricted is outside. The term restricted means it's outside the city. You don't have any choice, that's restricted for various purpose, either grant or agreement or whatever that is. Committed is your choice. You can commit, uncommit at will. That's why we have to break those apart, because they're two different levels on the hierarchy of fund balance. So, you'll see a number of them may happen to have a couple of different things there, but that, the total fund balance for that fund is added together, is how that would work. If you look to the financial statements, you would see that added together on the same fund. So, a little bit of a clunkiness as far as how we reported in the management communication letter here, but we can't combine that, because they're two different components.
So, if there's, in the general fund, $10 million unassigned up in that section, and then down in the bottom under unassigned?
Yes.
That's our special revenue?
Yeah, the whole section there you're in, the whole $7,638,000 subtotal is all of your special revenue funds. So, you'd never have an unassigned amount in a special revenue fund, because the definition of a special revenue fund means it's for a particular purpose. So, if you had a large unassigned, that would actually really make it so you couldn't even have that be a special revenue fund, and then that would show up in the general fund. Great question.
And this is where I would notate our conversation from last year in regards to the closure of TIF 7, and the need to build that general fund balance to prepare for that cash departure and just have another source to cover the funds that the general fund had covered in previous years. And with the council direction and the city manager's direction, this shows that we were successful in those strategies of which we did deploy through the finance, which I think is very positive and is shown in our unassigned fund balance this year.
Any other questions on?
One question, there's a line on for historical marker, what would that?
That's your, the chief for the park, the chief Indian that's getting redone, I believe, runs through historical marker. He's getting refurbished.
Okay.
Yep.
Because I also raised that, I raised that $5,000 from a private donor, does that appear here, or does that appear?
That would indirectly, it appears in fund balance, but it wouldn't show as an individual line item.
Okay. Any other questions on that? Kind of jumped ahead, which is great, but back up one line there, you have a, below the general fund, then you have your debt service fund, so you have restricted for debt service, $923,000. Again, there's an outside restriction that you have to spend that $923,000 on future debt service. Special revenue, we talked about, as you can see, the restricted and committed are listed there. You know, again, just to further explain, the unassigned you do see there in special revenue, and we'll also talk about that on the next page in your capital projects, you can only have a unassigned fund balance in these funds when you have a deficit. So, in those particular funds, you do have a relatively small in comparison deficit in for individual funds. So, that's how they show in there as deficits.
And these will be items that I'll be bringing to you in the coming months. We do want to resolve those negative fund balances, and so, we'll be bringing forward resolution with a proposal from, to make, to complete a transfer from the general fund.
What is that public works special fund typically?
So, that one will resolve itself, that is where we are running through our leadwater grant program. So, that one will resolve itself through reimbursement back from the state.
As you can see there on the bottom there, this total special revenue fund, $7,638,000, that's all of them together, obviously, including the deficits, compared to $7,881,000 a year ago. And if you turn to page six, it shifts gears a little bit into the capital project funds. These are all of your main capital project funds, the majority of them being your tax incremental districts or your TIDS. You can see them all listed there. Again, there's various components of there, including non-spendable, in the prior year at least, in TIF 7, which is now closed. You have various restrictions in the various TIFs there listed. And then, you have some other assigned fund balance in, for capital improvements in various other funds, as you can see. Again, these are where all your capital project funds are accounted for, so there's some very large dollar amounts as those are spent. And then, on the bottom, you have unassigned, and this is what Trina was kind of talking about, you have all of your TIF districts, your TID districts, that, you know, have a deficit fund balance. And, you know, as you go through time and the TIDS go through time, your expectation is that, you know, in theory, they should be fully funded by the tax increment, but that does not always happen in actual terms, because, again, just a reminder, as you all know, that TID financing is a financing mechanism. TID funds are a financing mechanism. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. So, again, that healthy fund balance, very, very important to have when these TIDS come to closure. $22,702 in total capital project funds compared to $16 million. And you have a permanent fund, which is a separate category of fund, restricted for trust fund, $10,622. Total governmental fund balances for the entire city, $52,263,708, as compared to $44,5,326 a year ago. Any questions on governmental funds? Switching gears to page seven. Seven kind of leaves the general fund and kind of the tax levy philosophy kind of on that page, and it switches gears now to business type activities. And by business type activities, it's a proprietary fund. It's designed for your charges for services, your operating revenues that you charge customers to fund your expenditures, that's expenses, that's really how it's designed. That's why we don't talk about fund balance anymore. Now, we talk, in these types of funds, we talk about how operationally did you do? So, we talk about the income statement. Charges for services, $15,122,000 coming in, compared to $14,400,000 a year ago. And then, you can compare that to operating expenses, $8,616,000, operation and maintenance, obviously, the cost to deliver water, $5,255,000 being the primary, as expected. Depreciation, the component of that, where you depreciate your assets and your utility plant that you have, $3,208,000. You have a small tax, payroll tax line of $153,000. So, total operating income for the year, $6,505,000, up from $5,654,000 a year ago. And again, yet below that line then is everything that's non-operating, so not directly related to the service of water, delivery and water consumption. Interest expense on debt service, $1,849,000 coming out. You have investment return of $162,000 coming back in, so a net non-operating expense of $1,687,000. Income before contributions and transfers, see that flowing down from operating income down a little bit to $4,818,000. Then, you have a capital contribution, $431,897, and then a transfer out of $1 million. So, that change in net position for the whole entire year is $4,250,000. And you can see that on the bottom, we talk a little bit about that as compared to $3,618 as a net change in position a year ago. Again, water rate increase went effective August 1st, 2016, contributed to the 4.6 increase in revenues. So, that takes a little bit to get going and to be seen on the income statement, but you're seeing the effects of that. Questions on the water? Sewer utility, again, same concept, same income statement analysis here, $13,530,000 for charges and revenues for the sewer. Compare that to operating expenses of $9,516,000. You have operating income of $4,014,000. Below that line, you have your non-operating, a total net non-operating expense of $1,819,000, which is made up of interest expense and, of $2 million in interest, I'm sorry, investment return of $193,000 coming back in. Capital contributions adding to that, $855,000. You have a change in net position sewer of a little over $3 million, as compared to $2 million, $2.5 million a year ago. And again, change was primarily in revenue of the $13,530 compared to $12,601 was, that the rates were effective January 1st, 2017, so you adjusted your rates. Stormwater. Operating income made up of operating revenues of $9,200,000 compared to operating expenses of $4,026, brought an operating income for the year of $5,228,000, as compared to $4,808, a year ago. You have a net non-operating expense, again, majority of that being interest expense on long-term debt, $2,206,000, and then a capital contribution of $2,643,000. Change in net position overall for the year, $5,664,000, as compared to $5,100,000 a year ago. Again, rates went effective April 1st, 2016 in there, you're seeing that carried through. Transit utility on page 10. Charges for services, $895,000. Total operating expenses, $5,057,000. So, you have an operating loss in the transit utility of $4,162,000 this year, compared to an operating loss of $3,591,000 a year ago. How is that funded? Below that line, you can see you have, majority of the funding is intergovernmental revenues, that's your transit aid coming in, state, federal, $3,186,000. You have property tax levy coming in here of $887,000, and then you have an interest expense on debt of $57,000. So, you have non-operating revenues, funding or almost funding, a portion, almost all of it, $4,16,000. You're left with a change in net position of $145,977 to the negative a deficit, down from a positive $145,000 a year ago. Parking utility, bottom of page 10, $167,000 in charges for services, operating revenues, $282,000 in operating expenses, brings an operating loss of $114,795. Small interest expense there of $2,000, and a transfer in of $35,000, brings a total net position change of a negative $81,368, an improvement, a little bit of an $85,000 loss a year ago. Page 11. Ashkosh redevelopment project. Operating income of $185,000 for the year, down from $456,000 a year ago. Primary factors there, obviously, operating revenues, $1,822,000, and then operating expenses of $1,637, subtracting from that. You have a $50,000 interest expense as non-operating expense, change in net position for the redevelopment project is $135,000 overall, compared to $426,000 a year ago.
What is that? What is the Ashkosh redevelopment project?
That is where your room tax money goes in, and then basically, Trina, if you want.
So, that is where we do our financial accounting for our convention center, which we own and lease out, but we also run all our room tax dollars through that and distribute to the CVB and the grand portion of that. So, that is the fund where that is kept financially.
So, so, we're saying here that we were down almost $300,000 in the charges for services? No?
No, that's, we're down in room nights, that affects the room tax.
Room tax went down, the charges for services went down, so your operating revenues went from $2,026,000 to $1,800,000. And then, at the same time, your operating expenses for the fund went up. So, that's what made up the $400,000.
And we have to stay, I think it's net neutral, right, for the debt on the convention center?
Yeah, there's something with the debt as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's some.
Because there's that agreement with the Ashkosh Community Foundation and stuff for the debt.
The approval of the debt, the additional debt that we took on through the state trust fund loan expenses were shown up there. And we did quite a bit of work in 2017.
Bottom of page 11, industrial park. Charges for services, $27,000 compared to operating, and operation and maintenance of $13,000, operating income of $14,000 for the year, down from $22,000. Then, you have your interest expense on debt of $37,000 coming off of that. So, the change in net position there is a deficit of $22,000, as compared to a positive $10,000 a year ago. Page 12. The final two proprietary funds golf course for the two years there. You have an operating loss this year of $35,000, a little bit better than last year of an operating loss of $43,000. As you can see, the charges for services of $512,000 is down from $544,000 a year ago. And then, your operation, operating expenses are also down, operation and maintenance down, $512,000 from $552,000 a year ago, and then depreciation is flat. So, that makes up the operating loss of $35,000. You have a very small interest expense of $96, so your change in net position is relatively the same as your operation, $35,158 overall. Inspection services, $1,320,000 for charges for services, operation and maintenance there of $884,000, change in net position, $436,000. So, that really kind of rounds out all the proprietary funds. And again, it might make more sense to obviously reference the actual comprehensive annual financial report for these, because there, you're going to see, this is a snapshot of just the income statement, you're not seeing the statement in net position of what you carried over. So, that really tells the total picture. So, I obviously would advise anyone that wants more information to look at the actual comprehensive annual financial report for that. Any other questions with the financial information before I conclude on the comments and observations area?
And I'm sorry, where did you say the CAFR was available, Trina?
It is available under the finance department on the city intranet.
That's this, it's this document that you have.
Yep.
Page 13 switches to the final section of the management communication letter, and this is what we call the comments and observation section. This is where we can kind of tell you about things coming up, or perhaps give you some recommendations on best practices and so forth. So, page 13 goes through uniform grant guidance, and I won't spend a lot of time explaining what uniform grant guidance is. We talked about it, Tom talked about it in years past. This is a new requirement a couple of years ago that really replaced the single audit requirement. So, I talked about at the beginning, that's one of the documents in the audit package is the state and federal single audit. That's really where we audit your state and federal grants throughout the entire city. Well, two years ago, they really, they really changed the requirements for this significantly, and they called it uniform grant guidance. You know, again, I won't go through the details, but their intent really, and there is the federal, the feds that's giving you the money, is essentially driving this, is really trying to get proactive in some of the issues that their grant recipients were having. And this isn't particular to your city, this is now speaking in general terms of the country and the nation. What they're having is a lot of problems, a lot, a lot of problems for grant requirements and clients and cities and municipalities not following the rules. And the way the setup worked past, pre-2016 is, we would come in, do our single audit, and we test your transit. do our single audit, and we test your transit program, we test your other major programs, and then if you did something wrong, we'd report that back. Well, we're issuing the audit, it's August of two thousand and eighteen, we're issuing a, a report in two thousand and seventeen. So most audits are issued six months after the year end. Federal government doesn't take a look at these until another six months, at least, sometimes more, more like a year. So now we're into the middle of two thousand and nineteen before the federal government notifies anything's wrong. And then they come back and say, well, okay, now you gotta fix it. So now you've got an entire year of two thousand and eighteen, you've done it wrong, a second year, and then a half of a following year, you've done it wrong. So you've got multiple findings. And what we're, they were seeing is municipalities that had problems had multiple findings, two, three years in a row. So they decided to change it. They decided to say, you need to have your internal control over these grants up to speed or up to a minimum level before we give you the money, and they're gonna assess that. And that's what uniform grant guidance does. So not only now are we testing back like a normal audit, we are testing your internal controls and saying, okay, do you have the adequate controls to govern over your transit grant or your other grants? And then we have to then assess findings on that, not just what you did, it's what you're doing. And what it really does is it's gonna make municipalities and governments a whole lot better as far as adherence to the federal guidelines, and it already has done that. This comment here is saying that you've met those requirements, you've met the minimum requirements. However, as a reminder, this requirement isn't just a, okay, I've done it, now I don't have to worry about it ever again. It is a living, breathing document and, and set of controls that exist over your grants. So if one person in your control of a particular grant leaves, or you restructure in any minor way, it changes what you have, and it could change some of the procedures you have. So it has to be always looked at. So there is, what I'm saying here is it could be improved, and it should continuously be approved. Not a negative thing, but it's a, a reminder that this is not a, okay, we met it, we're good. It's continual, and ten years from now, it'll still have to be continual. So, uh, that's what that's in here reminding you of. Page fourteen is talking, uh, finally about, uh, about really a new accounting standard. And, and this is a couple of years out. This is effective, it's first of all, GASB statement number eighty-seven, which is concerning leases. It is a, uh, uh, effective for your financial statement for the city for years after, beginning after December fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen. So your two thousand and twenty CAFER and audit will be effective in here. So we've got a couple of years here, I won't spend a ton of time on this. Um, I just wanted to make you aware of it. There, the lease guidance, there used to be like three different components of the lease guidance in three different areas. What they did is they're combining all of it. They're making it more streamlined, they're bringing it a little bit closer to private industry FASB, and, uh, so, so governments are getting a little bit closer to what a, a business would report at. And what it's really doing is trying to make it transparent. So the O P E B, all the O P E B guidance in the past has really tried to do that, is get all that stuff on the face of your statements. Arguably, one could say it makes it more confusing, but if you read through all of the footnotes and everything, it does lay it all out there for any users to see. Leases, no different. In the past, the old rules, you had capital lease, you had operation, operating lease, and depending on how different rules met, were met, or not met, you put it in one. Operating lease is simply a, an expense. A capital lease was a, a debt, is a financing. They kind of threw that out and said, you know what, if it's, if you're leasing for a finance mechanism, if you're going to, uh, buying a piece of equipment, no matter how it's worded, whether it's a capital or, it's, it's a, it's a liability. It's a, like you went out and loaned for it. So they're kind of making it a little bit easier there. All that means to you is you just have to be aware that all leases now are really covered under this. So if you're leasing anything in any part of your city for any piece of equipment or any piece of capital item, put it in a file and, and run it by us, or look into it yourself, and, and it's gonna have to be a liability on there. Not a whole lot of change here. I mean, there's very few, you know, operating leases that are really significant out there. There could be though, that's why we're putting it in here. I think what, what caused this is I think they were getting kind of creative with some of the leasing agreements to try to get around the capital and operating, and, and it got to a little bit too much for GASB. The other one issue that is a completely new area with this leases is when you lease something to someone else. So that has never been in the standards, never been a, a particular rule, but if you lease any equipment to any other municipality, any other person, private party, if you lease land, which is fairly common, uh, in, in, in larger governments, um, and, and some medium-sized governments, that will be effective for this, and there's certain rules that have to apply. And again, I won't go through all the changes, we'll do that at, when we get a little bit closer. Um, but again, the, the takeaways of this, there'll probably be another footnote or two that you'll see in two thousand and twenty. Rest of the document is your representation letter back to us, um, and that concluded the audit process on August twentieth. Any questions or anything else you want me to cover?
I think the only thing I'll just add for the council, um, this year's audit, uh, they always are a challenging, uh, process to go through, uh, but the success of this audit with the implementation of a new accounting system and the transition of an assistant finance director, um, I attribute much of this success to my finance team that I have on the first floor. I do want to take some time to give them credit, as well as our new assistant finance director, Jennifer. Um, she has come in and assisted in, uh, our partnership with Shank and, and working through this process. We strive for a final audit with no management comments, and I think that we do very well. Um, in a year of much change and transition, I think we were very successful. So, uh, just want to throw that out there.
And I would agree with that, certainly appreciate the cooperation, uh, that we got from, from both of you and, and your entire staffs.
Um, just a question.
Yes.
Um, in the back of the CAFER, uh, little line item here, uh, utility, utility customers that you're in, where we have from two thousand and eight to two thousand and seventeen, so it looks like, I'm sorry, page one forty.
Well, you're in this book now.
So this is your compilation of that data from W P S and Wisconsin Public Service Commission, right?
Yeah, this is prepared by your, your fiscal staff.
Okay, not you, from our, okay, okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yep.
Yep, we would work with the assessor's office and inspections on obtaining this information.
Oh, no, I was talking about the, um, utility customer.
Oh, that would actually.
Came from W P S in the, okay.
Yep. And we've got that footnoted where we pull that information from down below.
How often does that come out, or what point in time does that usually come out in the year? I know we're looking at, at up to two thousand and seventeen, when can we, like, get new numbers for two thousand and eighteen? Just curious.
So, uh, we will go to poll when we get ready to prepare our next CAFER statement. Um, so we poll it in the June through August timeframe is where we look for it. So I don't know the exact release date, but I can tell you that's when we get the number annually.
Okay, just curious. Thanks.
If there are no further questions, let's move on to, next on your.
Six month financials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jota. So in your packet on page four starts the revenue statements. Um, I can go over a very brief synopsis of those. They are trending as anticipated. Um, I do not have any revenues of which I would like to report to the council of the items that I'm concerned or feel that, things that we may not achieve our budgeted revenues. So I think revenues are trending as anticipated and expected for a good, uh, outcome. The next statement I would turn you to is starting on page six. That would be our expenditure statement for the six-month summary. Um, where I would point you to is on page seven, uh, midway, general fund outcome performance right now. We've used about forty-six percent of our annual, uh, operating budget, which considering we're fifty percent through the year, that's a very positive outcome. The one thing that I will notate for the council is we're already aware of that our sodium chloride is going to go over budget this year, um, and that's due to the use of salt and pricing, and we're also seeing fuel, um, those prices are not coming down. Fuel and sodium chloride are two items that have contributed to the assistance of growing our fund balance. And so although you're not seeing that impact in this six-month financial, I want to approach this very conservatively because sodium chloride will come in, in September, and, and we'll continue to watch the fuel, but, um, the performance currently is in a very good position, but I think we want to look at that good position very conservatively, uh, because, uh, we still have the half a year, and with those two known, uh, influencers, uh, they could have an impact on our year-end results. Um, so overall, revenue and expenditures are performing well, but we definitely want to continue to monitor, and, and we'll be reporting the status of those out to the council. Does anybody have any questions on the revenue and the expenditure statements?
Just one question, under bank fees, what do those fees cover?
Yep. So those would be, uh, monthly charges that we receive, uh, from our accounts that we hold within the banks for processing our checks and, and our money through the system and for giving us monthly statements. So it's those kind of just monthly charges that a normal person would pay at the bank, but we pay at a negotiated rate.
Okay.
Any other questions that I can answer?
Well, I guess just one, why are we in a hole for patriotic celebrations?
Very good question. So that, what is that is, what that is attributable to is we have paid for all the fireworks, the reimbursement comes back around, uh, festival reimburses us, that happened after June, and so that will come out of the hole, uh, once the, we have the revenue posted from festival, which happened in July.
Twelve five.
Yes, the twelve five, correct, Mayor. Any other questions that I can answer?
So, Trina, if, um, being that we are just past the halfway mark, and if we look at the percent, excuse me, expended column, if we're much over half of what was budgeted, I mean, should we be concerned about that?
Um, that could be a benchmark, but it can't be the only analysis tool you use, uh, because somebody could have like a software maintenance contract that's a hundred thousand dollars that they pay in January, and so then when you're looking at, um, taking that in a, a segmented per month, it, it drives up their expended amount. And so there's other, uh, factors that do influence the percent expended, but it's a good starting benchmark to look at where you're at and, and to investigate further if you are over that fifty percent, uh, line item.
A good example is Police and Fire Commission. We've nearly spent the entire budget, uh, but normally the, the hires, the testing processes at the beginning of the year, and we had extra money in that budget this year because of the fire chief replacement. We knew that was gonna happen. So even though it's, it's practically, uh, overspent, um, it may go over a little bit for the whole year, but we're not that surprised that it's, it's virtually spent out at this time of the year.
Police and fires only at forty percent. You, you must be looking exa, at the auxiliary place.
Police and Fire Commission.
Yeah.
Page six.
Yeah.
No, we're at.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You're looking at seventeen.
Yep.
Yeah, seventeen, we were, it wasn't that much, but with the police, uh, the fire chief, that's where we really spent a lot of money. But that's just one example, so, you know, it could be just the opposite. If we were filling, uh, when we did the police chief recruitment a few years ago, we did that one in the latter half of the year. So, uh, that can happen in any of those accounts. There's usually a story behind a lot of those. Economic development, we do our big payment to go E D C at the beginning of the year. Uh, we don't just give it to them in, in dribs and drabs, we pretty much just write them a check in January. So that's why that number is higher than fifty percent. And then, again, with each of these, you've got a story that you can tell with each of them.
Well, this is timing.
Timing is every, oh yeah, everything.
Yep. Okay. So if we don't have any questions, we'll continue on to page eight. You've already seen this, but I do like to include it. The analysis of the general fund, we call it equity, also could be called fund balance. You'll see the twelve thirty-one, two thousand and seventeen entry, um, the ten million three hundred and seventy-six dollars, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars, the fund balance. You'll see that ties into our CAFER and our management communications, as well as we talked about the reservations and the, uh, inventory. So that is something we'll continue to present where this becomes more important once we reach that fourth quarter position and we start to talk about the outcome and the current performance of the two thousand and eighteen budget year. But right now, we know that our fund balance is in a healthy position, which is, is good and a good outlook for the city's financial condition. So then I would turn you into page nine, and I would invite, um, Darren and Kelly Nyforth forward. Um, when we go over our financial status and, and condition of the city, one important item that we do like to discuss is the performance of our TIF districts and how those are looking, and look at that not just from a short-term projection, but also a more large, uh, excuse me, more long-term projection. So we've included in a projected performance sheet, uh, this would include all active TIF districts within the city currently. Um, I'll break that down a little bit for you while Darren and Kelly are getting adjusted. Um, so what we give you is the year the cre, the, the TIF created and the anticipated closing date, then we look at the current increment, the current cash, the total debt outstanding, anticipated future increment, anticipated future revenue and expenditures, and the net anticipated available balance at closure. I will tell you that this column, net anticipated available balance at closure, is a projected balance. It is something that can change, but it's something that we want to, and we work collaboratively with economic development, and just looking at the long-term performance and where we think the TIF districts are gonna head, um, to develop strategy and action to any balances that we might need to have different plans, uh, for. Uh, I don't know if you two have anything you'd like to add at that point?
No, if there's any, you know, specific questions, were we gonna go through each one individually, or just if there's any overall questions?
Well, it's probably important to go over the negative ones so the council understands what those are, cause some of them, the, some of them are, are cost for concern, other ones are more, uh, based on the, the projection. Um, and Trina and I have gone through some of these. For example, uh, the first one that, that jumps out, uh, and on the negative is Marion Road Pearl, the TIF thirteen. And if you go down TIF twenty-one is Marion Jackson. There, those are overlapping TIFs, so you see there's a positive fund balance projected for TIF, uh, twenty-one, but a negative, um, unfortunately, the negative is less than the positive, but we're looking at ways that we can perhaps, uh, get those reconciled together because, uh, the reason the performance on Marion Pearl is, is less is because we created an overlay district and that one's doing positive. So we have to look at what the rules are that we can, uh, get those, get those, some of those expenses maybe moved around so that, that one evens out over time. But, uh, when you create an overlapping district, the tendency for one of them to go negative, the earlier one to go negative i- is there, and clearly that's the case. But if you put them together, it nets out to about two point three million, which is, which is much better, uh, on the positive side. Some of the other ones, uh, I think that, you know, the one that needs to jump out the most, uh, and they're really, uh, sort of the same, is TIF twenty-three and TIF twenty-six. The most recent Southwest Industrial Park TIF, as well as the Aviation Industrial Park. And obviously, those two are large negatives. There is no projection based on any activity that we could see in the future. What I mean is somebody develops out there and something happens, and then we get tax judgment from that. We're not making any projections based on something that hasn't happened yet, and that's probably is much a reason for those to be negative. They are both early in their, their, uh, life cycle, but even that, I mean, that, that's over, uh, ten million dollars. Obviously, that's something that, uh, you should be concerned about, but those are based on, if nothing happens in those TIFs ever, this is what would happen. Obviously, we. Obviously, we have great optimism that something will happen. I think Southwest Business Park with, or Industrial Park with the...
A transload terminal.
The transload facility that'll...
We're receiving a lot of interest in TIF 23 properties in that TIF, so we are hopeful that we will have some increment coming in within the next few years.
And that's going to be a challenge because the TIF was formed in '09, we're already nine years into it. That's a genuine concern. Similar, the Aviation Industrial Park, that's, that's another one that we've gotten it done. And I think the next step, as council members have frequently mentioned, is getting the taxiway installed by the county to, to generate some interest in that park. Those are two of the biggest ones, and, you know, we got to get, we got to address the 800-pound gorilla. The other ones are relatively easy, but those two, those two are clearly the, are weak spots.
So two questions on TIF 31 Buck Staff redevelopment, that's our Sawdust District TIF, right? I guess I'm a little confused as to why we would be projecting a negative balance at closure on that.
And the reason that is, is because what we've included is that Pago payment. However, the increment, they haven't went through their first tax assessment. Their first tax assessment will be, it was January 1 of '18 for '19, and so their increment will be earned on calendar year '19. So because we don't, at this point, we haven't put something through for a tax bill for them, we haven't projected any increment, and that, so we will fill out that anticipated future increment column. You'll see almost all of the new TIFs have a zero or a dash there, and that's just because we haven't calculated a tax bill for them yet to annualize where we think that increment stream will go.
But the way we've designed it, those will be zeros. So we're not concerned about those, even though they currently indicate a negative number. But that's a legitimate question because those are, if you look at them similar to other TIFs, that could, it could raise a red flag. Once we start getting cash flow in with those, those numbers will start to disappear.
So you're anticipating in TIF 20 and 24 that there'll be no net balance at closure? No positives?
TIF 20 is a really good, that's an excellent question, Councilmember Herman. And I think that's something that economic development does want to touch in in this meeting in regards to the reason it's zero and the projects that you're going to be seeing in this future year CIP. So I'll let Kelly and Darren go into deal, detail on that.
I'd like to ask the second part of my question first. I had two questions. Sorry. Number 23, you guys said that we, you know, we had some concerns, and we do. Is there anything we can do to stop this from going that $4 million difference if we're at $2 million cash balance and projecting a negative 6.4 million at closure? Is there something we can do in between to mitigate that?
I mean, all the costs in there have pretty much been related to the development, so that's, you know, installing the utilities, WPS's utilities, and I believe in there we have a CIP item for paving the road. It's been three years now since that area's been developed with utilities, so typically that's when we start looking at paving. So that figure is also in there too, which doesn't help, but that's in there. So that's kind of the total cost to have that part of the industrial park shovel ready.
The old industrial TIFs are negative, and then they turn within their last few years. And so that's very similar here. But, I mean, I'm not, oh, all is well. We have to, the answer is, we got to get the railroad to start encouraging tenants and start filling that up, and then, then you'll see development occur, tax increment getting generated, and then we can start paying these off. But until then, you're going to see a negative for, for a lot of these traditional TIFs, you'll see a negative for 15 years before it finally turns on.
Especially the ones we put infrastructure in. They're much different than the ones that are project-based, like the granary or the beach building where it's just that one parcel, where we didn't put that type of infrastructure cost in. So that's kind of the difference between those types of TIFs.
Thanks.
A question on number 29.
Go back to Steve Herman.
Yeah, I think Councilor Herman had a few questions about TIF 20, and Darren and I, we can kind of take team on that one. TIF 20 is on the South Shore, so Darren...
It's Pioneer. It was, it was based around the Pioneer. We created that at the time when they were going to redevelop the Pioneer Inn, and then they took, so we created the TIF right when Pioneer was still in the tax rolls. Created it based on, based on a belief that they're moving forward with the development. Development never moved forward, so I think we immediately lost $4 billion. And then also within that district, over the years, we've acquired several properties. If you look at the block, north of Ninth Avenue, we acquired the entire block. We've acquired bits and pieces in that, in that TIF over the years. That's why we're so negative right now. We've not had any development to, the Pioneer hasn't come back, so that's why we're sitting negative right now.
But that is an area, it's, part of it is in the Sawdust District, and it's an area that I know we all want to see redeveloped, and we're working hard on the Sawdust District master plan right now. And, you know, as we move forward, we'll probably have to come back to council and talk about, do we want to put a new TIF, you know, on top of 20, you know, to capture that additional increment, new projects. We've talked about some public infrastructure projects such as, you know, running Ninth through, hopefully to someday vacate Pioneer Drive. So there are some opportunities out there, and I think when the time comes, we'll all have to come back together again and, you know, discuss what our options are.
And Riverwalk.
And Riverwalk too, yep. The, we are starting to look at the Riverwalk costs for along Pioneer and Pioneer Island, the Marina and that area.
And then 24, I guess, the Eco plant?
As a Pago, that's going to naturally zero itself out.
And that is based on their value, so if they don't, you know, they, it depends, you know, what they're paid is dependent on what their value is, so that's, yeah, that one.
Yeah, they've, it's only performed at about 40% of what they built it at, but they only get 40%. They, that's very clear, and that's, that's the beauty of a Pago, because if we did an upfront payment, given the performance of the property value, and we don't even assess that, that's done at the state level, you know, we would have seen ourselves in a rough situation. With a Pago, it can be as high or as small, they're only going to get whatever percent we allocate it to them.
Yeah, okay.
And I guess my, my other question is, while we're on the topic, do we anticipate any mixed-use TIFs? Are there any coming down the pike?
I don't think we have any right now that we're, you know, depending if, you know, we have that 43 East Seventh Street RFP out with the RDA property that is coming, hopefully proposals coming in in October. That's the one kind of just south of Pioneer Drive, the old advanced military packaging, old Chamco building. But, you know, we'll just have to wait and see what any proposals have.
And a lot of the TIFs that, you know, if we're talking about something like that, a lot of those qualify as blighted or redevelopment TIFs, and there's a better, you get more statutory bang for your buck by, by doing a blighted area TIF than you do a mixed, a mixed-use TIF. Mixed-use TIF is good, you know, somewhere on the periphery potentially. When we're looking at doing Shopko up in, up in that area in Fair Acres, that was, that was created as a mixed-use TIF that didn't move forward. So you can move those forward in, in those non-blighted areas. You move it down to, it's about a 20-year statutory timeframe on that versus the blighted-area ones, which are 27 years.
I have a question on 29, and that was created in 2016, and there's been no activity. Is that normal, to create a TIF that nothing happens for X years?
I mean, it can certainly happen. In this situation, we do not have a development agreement with the developers because they haven't had a project, but as I'm sure you've seen, there are some, you know, they are coming forward through Plan Commission with the GDP SIP process, so hopefully, you know, this year yet, we can get a development agreement together.
But it does happen.
It does, oh yeah, absolutely.
And is there recourse, can we say if nothing happens within X years, the creation that, done deal?
I, a good example might be like Darren mentioned a moment ago, the Shopko TIF that was proposed for the north side, where the park, where the townhomes and apartments are over there east of Pick and Save. That was at one point going to be a Shopko, and it wasn't happening. And so we essentially closed the TIF.
We didn't even certify it.
Well, we didn't even get that far, because it just didn't get anywhere. This one, I mean, they're still, the developers are still active, talking about Morgan District. You know, in retrospect, if I was them, I would have waited, but I think they, they felt it was going to move forward sooner than it did. I, I think they've lost a couple of years of tax increment, that's, and with it being a Pago, that's really their loss, not ours. So, I mean, the TIF will close in 2043, because it was a, it's classic, a redevelopment TIF as you could ask for. So look at the maximum number of years.
It's not costing us anything.
Right.
Correct. Little paperwork we got to file annually, but it's really their detriment for, for not getting it done.
Well, that's kind of saying that the South Shore one, nothing's been happening there, and that TIF's been sitting out there longer than Morgan's.
That's probably another good example. You know, with that one, we're probably going to look at some overlay districts there because of all the other things that have been going on there. Because Brian Burns happened in South Shore District, yet it's dwarfed by everything else that's happened there, because Darren said we lost $4 million. We lost $4 million in value. You scared me a little bit, Darren. Yeah, we lost $4 million in value, but that's, that was a legitimate loss in terms of, it took our TIF district and basically turned it inside out.
But it appears as, since 2010, when we kind of went with the Pago TIF policy and moving forward, that it's protected the city a little bit better than previous ones, it looks like.
Yes, the only districts that have been non-Pagos, 25 City Center Hotel Rehabilitation, part of that was, part of it was upfront too. So, but even with that, because the developments already occurred, you see a positive projected fund balance because the hotel's thriving and doing very well. And the Aviation Business Park was really the last one we did that was not a Pago.
So, so if I read this right, 17 TIF was a donor TIF to that City Center? Because we owe to 17 million three in 2028? Was that a donor TIF?
Yeah, go ahead, Darren.
I don't believe we amended 17 as a donor. I don't recall that.
Yeah, TIF 25 owes TIF 17 roughly 1.3 million, and I'm guessing that was maybe used for the upfront payment. So, yep, so eventually when...
Ask feedback.
Yeah, so when 25 gets to that positive increment and they can start making those payments back to 17, then hopefully with 17, we should be, we should be fine.
Okay.
And we have put that revenue, that's the positive number, the 1.3, that is under TIF 17.
And I misspoke, TIF 27 is also partially, that's Bemis, the name always throws me off. I keep thinking of Bemis, and that's, if you recall, there was a Pago for Bemis, but some of the stormwater work that we're doing out there, that was some upfront money, traditional TIF type of thing. But, and that one's showing negative, but that's, there are other projects that are planned out there. We made that, that was one where we put a pretty big district together, and we put a lot of stormwater and everything, so that'll benefit as businesses grow out there, and that's really going to be more business expansion TIF, and we'll see more of that in the future. So those, that's kind of the, the staff internally calls it the snapshot of the TIFs. This is consistent with what you see in the audit, so I'm glad you didn't ask the questions during the audit, because they really, these were, this is where the meat of the, the audit really comes, is with this analysis. The ones I'm most concerned about, TIF 23 and TIF 26. The other ones, I think, are manageable, and you'll see that, but if you want to certainly be concerned, you know, those are the two you really, really want to be concerned about. And obviously, we're looking at that all the time.
And we have a partner, oh, go ahead, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
If we can fade that, our concern to go EDC, that, these two TIFs?
Well, that, that goes back to the council's goal about pushing industrial land, and I think, you know, Councilmember Herman has brought up multiple times about the issue with the county with the Aviation Business Park and getting...
But it's on, it's in their CIP now finally, so hopefully, hopefully, they'll do something.
And I think now that we have the, the railroad is, Wisconsin Southern or...
Watco.
Watco. They're probably our, our best partner right now because they're actively looking for tenants because they want people to use their transload facility, and because they've invested so much in it, that's actually going to work in our, in our benefit, because they have a vested interest.
They'll be lobbyists for us.
Yeah, they will be, they'll be our best salesperson.
No, no, we're okay. My biggest concern is the Aviation, number 26 as well, and conveying the concerns. It rests right now in the, in the county's hands, unfortunately. That's, that's where it's at, and it's a big risk. It's a big liability with, with nothing in front of us, nothing positive looking forward. It's not a great positive outlook for that particular one.
Back to 17 and 25 regarding the City Center Hotel then. So when we were talking about a loss of revenue in the prior document in our paper, they were down several hundred thousand. So how does that play into these projections?
So I would actually separate out the, the performance of the TIF versus the performance of the fund. The fund is impacted by much more than just the Convention Center, because we are using it as an in-and-out-for-hotel-motel tax. So for me, they're two separate items. There would be some very, I would call it, limited influence because revenue does influence increment, so that's would be the direct correlation, but the actual room tax driving and, and the correlation of that separate fund is different.
But the room tax doesn't play any...
No, it does not. Primarily the room sales for the...
Heads and beds.
Yep.
Correct, less heads and beds in that fiscal year.
Right, and the city committed the room tax to the CVB to be the city's arm for convention, tourism, that whole thing, and then we designated the increase that we could do by law to go back and pay off the debt to the Convention Center. So, yeah, they, that, the hotel's a separate entity to, to that whole. Their TIF was to rehab the hotel, and their tax revenue for room tax comes back to us, designated to the CVB as our entity for...
So wasn't our goal or objective in rehabbing the hotel to...
generate more revenue, sure, but they need more room nights than they're currently getting. And that's been their, an issue for them. They've talked about it, and they're looking at, you know, doing more things to get more revenue.
One challenge we did face is our room tax did dip in 17. I can tell you though that I do monitor that monthly, and the performance of room tax overall in Oshkosh, it has started to climb back up. A lot of that is really geared towards our success, and we're starting to become a convention location. And so if we don't get a major convention, you know, we are going to see that impact into our room tax dollars, but this year is trending what I would call at or a little above previous years. But 17 years, we, in 2017, we did experience a dip in the room tax.
And the minute we noticed it, it was very matter-of-fact with the folks at the hotel, they said, oh yeah, you know, we know we're going to have a down year. Not significant, but it's just not going to be as good as the prior years. And they know that because a lot of these conventions, they book two, three years in advance, so they know the handwriting's on the wall. They may work on some marketing to get some more heads and beds for nights, but if corporate use is down, they got a pretty good idea when corporate use is down, and definitely the convention.
Well, Trina, some other conversations that relate to that regarding the Airbnb discussion, would that special fund also, let's say hypothetically, we ended up with something from that, would that also be factored in to that?
Yes, Councilmember Paul Mary, that would be an excellent addition into the, that particular fund, because Airbnb's would be paying that and contributing that 10% room tax along with the hotel motels in the area. tax along with the hotel motels in the area. And that is something we will be bringing forward as part of the 2019 budget discussion.
Is adding Airbnb room tax dollars?
Correct.
And any implications or effect it has on the EAA hotels that we can commonly refer to as, the amount of citizens that vacate the city of Oshkosh for seven to 10 days and rent their houses out, it's no different than an Airbnb, except for it's going through a different website.
And there's a limit on how many times a year you rent out. So, some of those folks don't.
There's regulations.
Yeah, it's regulated by the state.
Good, okay.
That discussion is being held up in Ashwale, not too.
Yeah.
So, as that discussion goes forward, sorry to digress off TIF guys. Do we have any way of determining whether or not our decrease in our hotel room tax was in conjunction with increases in those other non-mainstream temporary rentals? Or do we?
I'd say it's hard to say right now, but when Dan Shetter knows that the number's going to be down, he's not thinking about Airbnb.
I know, I'm just saying, do we have any sense of whether or not that.
Not yet.
Does it or not?
Because they don't have to register their hoses. They don't have to register during EAA, and CVB wants to get out of doing that for those people, so.
When we implement the business, when we implement the Airbnb applicability to this, and we see a bump, we'll have the answer to your question.
All right, thanks.
But I think this year is up, because I've been asked to do more welcome speech than ever before.
Yeah.
It's been a lot, and big groups, big groups.
I think they're hitting their stride. Twenty-seventeen was just an odd year, and you will have those. I mean, and Dan was very matter of fact about it. That happens sometimes, you just don't hit these things. But we're on the circuit now, and that's helping us. So, different organizations, it's like, okay, now Oshkosh is back on the circuit. When we lost the hotel, and quite frankly, we lost a hotel 15 years ago, not just when it went dark for a year. We lost, we were off a lot of circuits 15-plus years ago, because we had an old tired hotel. I will say that, you know, it's great working with those folks. I, I just think that they are, they're consummate pros. I tease them for, for being a pain to, to John Urban and the facility staff, but I wouldn't want it any other way, because they are honest about issues over at the hotel, at the convention center. When we were doing our strategic planning over there, and you heard the, the noise whirring from the, from the HVAC system, they talk to us about those things on a regular basis. They are not going to let that thing slip, they're not going to let their facilities slip. And that's, you know, that, that's what I really like about them. They are staying on top of things. That's why the council invested in more, you know, the, the new carpeting and the new.
Decorating.
Decorating, I mean, that's just part of keeping it current. And they know we can't do everything, but we try to program it. And I think it's showing the, the fruits of our labor, that we aren't just letting it get old and tired.
I've had a lot of very good, positive comments from attendees at these different conventions, organizers about, you know, great treatment, they love the facilities, so it has had a real positive impact. And the size, as I said before.
More and more competition all the time.
The size of some of these conventions, they're, they're bigger and bigger every year.
Or even other events, you know, weddings and receptions and reunions with the Hallard opening, they're going to take some away from the convention center with the arena, taking away some things from the convention center. All those things play into that, you know.
So, you've got to have a first-class facility.
Right. And Appleton building their new sports complex, they're going to be able to do conferences and things and that, and be, you know, not far away from the convention, their expo center, so.
Anything more on the TIF? We do have to get back into some general budget things, but certainly, if anything comes up, they'll give, give staff a call. It may, it may be a Darren question, or a Trina question, or a Kelly question, but somebody will be able to answer it for you. Trina, let's.
So, then on page 10, that would just be something that we update monthly. That, it relates back to the previous page, and that's the TIF cash balance summary. That's just something that we watch monthly. The important factor that we're looking for is that the cash is netting out to greater than zero. And so, you can see from a cash position, the TIF districts are currently netting to approximately five, almost $6 million. So, that is positive. So, then I would move you on to page 11. This is something that we like to set the table with for our five-year model. And this is our historical numbers compared to our five other comparable communities. And so, I'll briefly go over some highlights in the, this year's statistics. The first chart would be looking at the municipal property tax levy. The city of Oshkosh currently has the second lowest levy, which is comparable to where we were at in 2011, 2012. But you'll see that of the highest, Waukesha, would be at the 61 million, comparable to our 37, almost 38 million. So, we're, we're in the lower range for our property tax levy. Then the next chart really moves us into our, how does our property tax look per capita? And you'll see that we've also held that second position for our per capita tax levy, about $568 per citizen within the population. You'll see, at the highest, it's $858. So, we're definitely on the lower trend of that. The municipal property tax rate, that's where we do have some movement within our placement. You'll see we're in position four at that $10.36. You'll see an average of $9.54. So, we're coming out a little higher than what we are seeing in the average of these six municipalities. Then I would move you into the next chart, which is equalized value, and looking from lowest to highest. Again, we're in that second position for equalized value. The one thing that I would note is, we did have some movement. If you look back in 2011, we did have the lowest equalized value, but we have now moved in 2017 into that second position. But overall, Waukesha is dominating that currently with a $6,128,000.
Well, I think the real issue there is that even though our levies are on the lower end, because of our value being also on the low end, that results in our rate jumping up as much as it is. The, the property tax rates are the lowest in those areas that have, you know, decent equalized value. And the levy, you can see the levies are all over the place. You got Janesville at the low end, Waukesha and Appleton at the higher end in terms of levies, but the rates, they're, they're amongst the lowest. And Eau Claire, similar-sized community, but they have a, but they have a value of over $5 billion, we're just under $4 billion. So, by their very nature, they're going to have a lower rate than us, even though they collect, you know, $4 million more in property taxes. So, it's just one of those things. The rate is, is the vehicle by which we collect the levy, but we're on the low end on the levy, but we're also the low end on the value, and that's what hurts us.
So, next then, I would step you into the shared revenues. This is something that we have held the fifth position in, in 2010 and 2016. You'll see that we are one of the communities in that fifth position currently receiving almost 11, $10.8 million contribution from the state. You'll see Appleton to the north of us, however, is receiving a higher amount of shared revenue, not much in proportion, though. The one thing that I would call your attention to truly in this chart, which jumped out to me, is if you look at our 2010 compared to our 2016, we've lost $1.1 million in shared revenue from the state. When we talk about property tax reliance, that is a contributing factor. When you see that, that revenue going down over a million dollars from a state, from the state, the only way to replace that is with property tax revenue. So, that I wanted to call out to you. The next item, general obligation debt, this is something that has been a concentrated focus for the common council since my arrival to the city of Oshkosh. The one thing that I would notate is, we have moved in position in comparison from 2010 to 2016. We were in the sixth position for the amount of debt issued in 2010. We're now in 2016 in that fifth position with the 138,876,000 approximately. The one thing that drew my attention in this, however, was we've increased 6,924,000. And when I look down below at Waukesha, in comparison from their 2010 to 2017, they've increased about $34 million. So, you can see that control that we've exercised in our debt issuance. And if you compare the other communities, they're definitely issuing more debt than we are right now. Appleton is in our range in West Dallas, but Janesville is higher, and Eau Claire is also substantially higher. And so, I think that I would attribute to our debt control policy and administration, and also a factor in us moving in our rating. Debt per capita, we are, we did move in position for that between 2013 and 16. We were in sixth position, we're currently holding a fifth position. The one thing that I found interesting in analyzing this, we're actually down $50 compared from 13 to 16, whereas when I look at Waukesha, they're actually up $598. And so, that debt management philosophy and administration that we've been working on, I, I feel we're starting to see the success in some of these statistics. Debt per capita, we are still holding that sixth position with our amount of debt that we have issued per capita, and it's, it's a ranking that appears we will hold for a while. But as we continue to look at our outstanding general obligation and our debt management philosophy, these are things that we just want to be looking at. And I think it's good to be looking at how our other municipalities trending. We've used debt as a tool for economic development, and that's something that we will be discussing in this current year CIP presentation to you in the next up and coming months. But you can see other cities are doing that as well. And I translate debt back to equalized value on some level. That investment, is it, is it giving you growth in equalized value? So, just some genuine points that I drew from it. Are there any questions that I can answer from this?
I have two quick ones. One on page 12, obviously, you've got 2016 data, the other, the other sheet, we've got some 17, 18, or at least 17 data. When can we see 17-related comparisons? And then two, what was the basis for using the other five communities as our comparisons? What's the reason for using them five as opposed to someone else?
So, this is something that the Wisconsin Taxpayer Alliance has, so they created the groupings for us, it wasn't a matter of our selection. So, that's how we get our comparable communities. And unfortunately, we're, we're driving our debt and our shared revenue back to 16, because that's what they're preparing the data through. So, like, the numbers that are on this report, they actually haven't even published, but we anxiously called them every day to see if they would send us the numbers before they published and received them.
Yeah, the numbers on page 11 are more generally available, but Taxpayers Alliance, they, they're generally a year behind on this, the numbers on page 12.
Good.
And, whoops, nope, sorry, go ahead.
So, Trina, you said, you know, and this is true, we look at whether or not our debt investment is increasing our equalized value. And I guess, maybe I'm thinking about this in a circular way, but I'm questioning, like, how it is we're on the higher end of that debt per capita, right? But yet, going back to the discussion of equalized value, we're on the lower end of realizing return on that investment. So, how do we, how's that explained?
I would attribute a lot of that to is, just that, that outdated infrastructure that wasn't maintained for so many years. That emphasis in the 2008 to 2012, where we were putting that money into our street infrastructure and getting that ready, is, is a large component of what drove up our debt. I don't know if you would attribute anything in addition?
No, I think that that's probably a good explanation. It should, I would also note that with respect to the general obligation debt in 2014, there was a sizable increase in our debt, and that was, even though the council had already said, let's start turning that around, the first thing we did is we, we picked up the WRS debt liability, which added $10 million to our debt, which was still, you know, clearly the, I think Trina did that within a few months of her arrival. That was the right thing to do. So, I always like using 2014 as the year in which you really start seeing the progress, and I think you've seen that. And you see that with the debt per capita. But I think we got ourselves into a, sort of a spiral that we're now starting to get some control over, because we had low value, and low value says, okay, we don't have enough to raise money for operations, so we're not going to put a lot of cash money into capital projects, we're going to put borrowed money in. And we've kind of got ourselves caught.
Well, yeah, in 2010, we changed our shift, too. We were bonding for vehicles and bonding for things that had a 10-year life expectancy, but we were paying debt on 20 years. And so, there was a switch, consummate a switch on how we put things in the CIP versus the operation side. So, there was a lot of, a lot of this is carryover debt from '28, '09, '10, '11.
And that's why our rate is, is started to, to go up, because now we're borrowing it for 10 years or paying cash for some of those things.
Well, I guess I'm just, yeah, I'm just looking at the 2011 to 2015 deep slide on the equalized value.
That was pretty consistent. I think if you take a look at the other communities, that was all a matter of, A, the recession, and B, commercial properties and manufacturing properties seeing their assessments lowered. And I don't want to bring up dark store too much, because I don't want to beat that like a dead horse, but part of that is that the, the results of the recession took time for a lot of properties. And even when we had $30 million of new development going on along I-41, as the projects started getting done along each of the corridors, we started seeing development, yet we still saw a loss. And I think you see that experience, we're, we weren't the only ones who saw, who saw drops there. You can see it in virtually all of the communities, that there was a, a slide, and it began in 2011 was really when you started to see that big slide occur. You know, look, West Dallas, they lost nearly 200 million, and from 2011 to 2012, we were fortunate only to lose 14 million. So, you can see, but it's a cumulative effect of, of industrial properties either getting off the books, because they, when, they truly went dark, so they went from having value to having virtually no value. And then, commercial properties, that's when the Walgreens case really started to, to take root, and you saw other properties go down. So, I mean, if you take a look, you see some of those properties, it's only been the last couple of years where you've seen some, some increases, but pretty steady in the first half of this decade, things were going down.
And I would also attribute the manufacturing, that is something that, with the domination of, of manufacturing within the city of Oshkosh, that decrease in that valuation in manufacturing values, that is, is still happening. That's not something that we can control within the city, because that is assessed at the state level. But, but that is still impacting our assessed values, even this year, when you look at where we're at from an. look at uh, where we're at from an manu- a manufacturing assessed value perspective.
What role does residential play in this?
Oh, it's still huge, it's about seventy percent of our value.
But for the change, it's going to have a relatively low percentage of the change, wouldn't it?
Correct. Our, even though it's a large share of the overall pie, uh, the value has not been growing significantly. It's still pretty slow and steady. Uh, any increase in residential has primarily been due to uh, new multifamily housing.
Riverfront.
Not because our individual properties have been going up.
And does property condition have a pretty big impact on that?
Over time, it does. You don't necessarily see property condition have an immediate blip up or down statistically. You see a slide, yeah, I would say yes, a slide one way or the other, up or down, I would say yes.
So would it be too far a leap to say that as we are correcting property conditions, we are also addressing some of that slide in the equalized value?
Yeah, about ten, twelve years.
Marginally, marginally, marginally over decades.
Yeah. It won't happen overnight.
And again, a lot of home building is not taking place in Oshkosh.
Not the home building construction.
The homes being built out in the, around townships, and there are, you know, two, three.
You know, some of our new subdivisions, you know, that we just approved will help a little bit, but overall, yeah. It goes back, like you were saying, apartments and things like that is helping it more than taking a hundred-and-fifty-year-old house and rehabbing it.
And the new development we approved for, for Clairville Ninth, I mean, that's a multi-year um, project that will take, you know, I think it was sixty lots is what was in that one, and even if those are high-end, two-to-three-hundred-thousand-dollar uh, development, you know, homes afterwards, that's fifteen million, but it takes us three, five years to get there.
But if half of our homes in the city, okay, so if residential makes up seventy percent, seventy-seven percent of this, and if half of our residential units are um, pre-World War II, I guess, I mean, those numbers aren't exact, but it, it does seem to have a, more than a blip, um, if we're not taking care of those properties.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it'll go down.
It, it will go down, it's just we're, you necessarily see it. If you do a ten-year snapshot, you, you would see it, you would absolutely see it. So those are the, the statistics, that's just sort of a, a setup type of thing to kind of frame where we are. Um, Trina, you want to keep going, because we only have about twenty-five minutes?
So then I would lead you into page thirteen. You've already seen this page, uh, but I wanted to bring it back around to you. Uh, one, because I think it's a good number to start the discussion for the five-year model, and two, because expenditure restraint uh, estimate has been calculated. And so as a reminder, what page thirteen is telling us is that if we take our base budget assumptions, we have some discretionary and some non-discretionary, but with the, the assumptions that we discussed in the previous workshop, we need about one-point-six-nine, one million and six-hundred-and-ninety-one-thousand increase of levy, which is about four-point-five percent uh, increase in levy to fund these base assumptions. Um, and so that, I just want that to stick with you as we roll forward and start to discuss the next pages. Uh, so starting on page fourteen, what we have are, we've, every year we build out a model, and this model consists of, we have about ten years of actual data, and we evaluate the, the most recent five years, and develop some assumption, some assumptions to build a five-year model. On this fir- first page are the assumptions that we use to uh, calculate the model that is enclosed right after this page. The one item that I will point out is, general property tax would be the first assumption we're giving. When we're looking at that five-year weighted average, you're seeing that we have uh, come to a four-point-four-one percent increase. Through this model, what we've fed, fed through is that weighted average divided by two, divided by three, divided by four, divided by five, a very conservative increase in that general property tax. And also, then you can follow that down, and you can see the assumptions that we have given to each revenue function that will come in this following page. Uh, I will admit, it's conservative, but that's how we want to be looking at this, uh, because we are projecting into the future. And so what I would then ob- uh, draw you to is page fifteen. And what that's looking at is the five-year model into projection. And what it does is it breaks out first the major revenue sources, and then the other major categories, and it applies the assumptions from the previous page. And the most important line would be that bottom line, total revenues. And so what this model is predicting, the current budget has the seventy-three million three-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-three-hundred. It is taking the assumptions and applying them across the years, and raising the revenue uh, projection for the next four years. You'll see right below that column, overall increase. So what these assumptions are generating in additional revenue, uh, for example, two thousand nineteen, eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-one-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and twenty-three cents. So with applying the previous assumptions, that's what we're going to drive the new revenue to. So then that would lead us into page sixteen.
And the reason we do this is because we don't have figures from the state yet, so we're just putting, these are modeling projections, um, and I think, Trina, you may have used the word prediction, they're ra- they're not even predictions, they're just, we're making certain assumptions, and we don't want to be overly optimistic about the go- years going out. We're not budgeting for those years right now, so we can, it's better to be more conservative about those on the front end, but um, you know, even twenty-nineteen, uh, we said eight-hundred-and-eighty-thousand, we made a very conservative estimate for this model for property taxes, different than what we showed you earlier.
Which is double that, yeah.
Which was double that, yeah. So, you know, just recognize, these are all models, and it's just to kind of get your uh, bearings on where, where this can go. Um, we've made absolutely no assumptions on shared revenue, which in the middle of a biennium, that's probably a very good assumption. Um, we know other revenues may be going up, uh, uh, because of our commitment to streets, we could get a better number on aid to local streets. But we're still, even though we think we're going to get a better number for this model, we are not holding, holding that rosy uh, proposition. We just want to make sure that we're just modeling it for, just to give you a flavor of where we, we could be. I'm sorry, Trina, go ahead.
Thank you. So then we move into the expense model uh, assumptions. The two caveats I do want to talk about, um, that aren't included in this model, is we recently did receive a uh, notification from the county in regards to tipping fees. Uh, the standard tipping fees, they go up every year. Uh, however, the recycling tipping fees have doubled. They're going from five to ten dollars. That is going to have an impact on our recycling budget, uh, because we're now going to pay double to take our recyclables to the county landfill. Um, and so that uh, increases it in there, but wanted to let you know about that, so you can start to think about that. The other uh, item that was not included in this analysis is the, the discussion that we will be having, and that's in regards to the rental inspections. Uh, the common council and the public, I'm sure is aware of the, the new statutory uh, changes, which have limited our ability uh, to collect revenues from that rental inspection program. And, and we are anticipating bringing forward, and we'll discuss this in detail in the budget work sessions, uh, what that new rental inspection programs look like, and do, does the common council want to look at uh, property tax support for that program? Um, so those are two factors that aren't included in this analysis, but I want to get you to start thinking about those, because they will have um, implications in the budgets that we'll be talking about in our next work sessions.
To touch on that, your budget assumption of a one, one-point-seven-million-dollar increase just to maintain what we currently have, doesn't take into account any sort of rental inspection costs. And as we've been working through that in, in our committee, there could be a, a sizable cost to that, depending on which option uh, council ends up choosing to go forward with. A hundred, two-hundred-thousand dollars could easily be the cost, depending on what we choose, and that will have, it's a levy, it's, that's a levy impact that's big, that has to be taken into account, so.
So, and there are caveats all over the place on those things. So, between this presentation and when we present the budget to you, it's, you're going to have to, those things are going to have to get incorporated in. We're going to have to sit down with community development, say, all right, how do we pull this off? What's it going to take? Uh, recycling, that's going to be a huge one, because they're doubling the fee. Uh, so we have to factor all those things in, and meanwhile, we talk to departments about other things we can do, either to cut expenses or raise revenues.
And we're not unique in that um, cost on the recycling either, nationwide, um, because of the China ban.
This is worldwide.
This is global, this is not unique to us. Um, so, and apparently, uh, they have stuff going to the landfills now that you thought were going single stream, and other cities are landfilling it, because there's nowhere to go with that.
Yeah, it's, it's really tough, so that's something we have to live with. Um, we'll manage.
I think one of these days, we go back to glass.
There's a manu- a re-manufacturing opportunity there to do something with these um, recycled materials.
I'm, I'm very serious, the, the cost of all this plastic, and where do we put it? For those of us who are old enough to remember, you would pick out, you would gather bottles, taking back to the store to raise money for spending money. And now, the, the cost has been transferred to communities by the breweries, the soda companies, handle all this plastic, rather than they taking it back or taking the glass back. And then my speech, um.
Do you have our models or assumptions? Do we have any alternative scenarios? I know different things have been talked about in the past, um, come up every year in some form or fashion regarding a license registration fee, or any of those other alternatives? Are we looking at that in any of these models as alternative scenarios?
No, we don't do that level. This is ve- very much a high-level statistical analysis. Um, just to kind of set it up for, as you leave tonight, if these things were to happen, we would have some issues, because the last page is, is, is the, the most depressing of all, because it shows we're conservative on revenues and on expenditures, and as a result of that, you've got that gap.
Consistently, those changes come when we get the budget, and then each council member figures where they want to cut.
Or add.
Or add. And looking for those other opportunities. Between, between the end of this meeting and when we present the budget, that's where we will be looking at those types of issues, because we have to.
And the cost of a rental inspection program, if we allow properties to deteriorate and go downhill further and further, that has an impact on the equalized value. Where do, where do we invest? That's the question.
That's the one thing that I like. This model gives you a, a, a snapshot of what Mark and I look at before the budgets are balanced and we present them to you. Um, so this helps us start to develop some of the strategy and some of the, the analysis and the tools that we're going to use before we give you the budget to balance it. Um, so i- it has multiple benefits, but um, this is really showing you how the budgets come to us i- is one way to look at it. I don't know if you view it that way, but.
Well, we know that, you know, it, what the departments submit isn't necessarily going to reflect this model, but if we, but we take everybody and we throw these assumptions in there, um, anybody could go through these assumptions and find holes in them. And I, that's not, that's really not the purpose of it, so if somebody shoots a hole in it, it's okay, because uh, you've brought up a couple of points already that are part of that. We do this really to get ourselves, get our bearings straight when departments come in. Um, when they start varying from these assumptions, the red flag goes off to us. Now sometimes it's a, a red flag, and sometimes it's a green flag, sometimes there's good things that come out of that as well. Uh, and we'll see that, but the departments are closer to these individual expenditures and revenues than we are. Um, so we try to keep it at a higher level and see where they come in eventually.
Um, I do have a question on that page seventeen though, so we have our major expenditures up here at the top, and then under general government, we have like other public safety and other public works, what does that mean?
So other public works does not include streets or central garage. Um, there's a engineering under other public works, there's a couple other mini-things that fall under public works, um, but it, it takes out streets and central garage, because they fall up in major expenditures.
And what about other public safety then?
So other public safety, um, you would have the auxiliary, you would have the animal control, um, and other miscellaneous things besides police and fire.
Does this follow the state codes?
Yes.
So you also have some inspection services and code enforcement in there, if they're not.
In other public safety, or other?
Yeah, in other public safety, yeah. Because that number's way, because when Trina was reeling off those two, it was like animal control and uh, police and fire commission doesn't amount to much.
Inspections is in there.
Inspections is in there, so that gives you an idea. But the reason we show the big, you know, the big seven, is because that is three-quarters of the entire general fund budget. So as those go, so the rest of the budget goes.
Would it be a lot of extra work to look at those major items that are going to affect the budget? You know, the last one, we talked about, uh, James with Foxconn, it's getting harder to get contractors to bid, you're going to see increases in material costs, and this is beyond our control, basically. Is there, well, we can, we can compile a list of those things that will affect the budget that we ju- that we just?
Yes, and that's why we.
We can do nothing about, basically.
And personnel is, is three-quarters of that. I mean, it's, it's funny how the numbers that Trina uses in this analysis, it happens to be three-quarters, it's a different three-quarters, but three-quarters of our budget is, is personnel. So uh, when we came in, you know, it was the last work session, we were beaming, because uh, health insurance was only going to be two-and-a-half percent, and two days before, we had it at eight percent. So, you know, those are things that, as we get closer with more certainty in numbers, then the model really becomes more of a, well, that was a nice little exercise we went through, and now we have real numbers. And that's, that helps us get back to where we're going to balance it. And then do we take a look at those other options that, that Deputy Mayor Paul Mary points out? We got to look at those things, because when we start getting a, well, we're expecting a two percent increase in this revenue, and we get zero or a cut, everything goes out the window. We got to, we got to balance, no matter what.
The other thing is the decreased money for public minis- public municipal services. You know, what, that was here, and it's down here. Uh, I look at every time the university, they're, they're slowing down, they buy a house for a parking lot, that's off the tax.
So there's the expenditures, I think we want to, um, there is a reason Trina put that one-point-six, that million-six-hundred-and-ninety-one number on there, uh, and it goes beyond the models. Are any, any questions about the model? I mean, we, obviously, uh, if we take both those models, expenditure and revenue, we have a sizable deficit down the road. We balance it, but it's just that, just making you aware that these things, these trends, some of these trends could continue, and then we're, then we're in trouble, so.
I guess I did have a question on the model two, down under unclassified, our uncollectible accounts is typically, and mostly made up of like ambulance service, correct?
Yep.
And last year, I believe it was six-hundred-thousand-ish?
So ambulance is three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand, the remainder is the low settlement will go there, so it's the lawsuits related to the um, property taxes. Uh, that, those are to the two major influencers in that unclassified.
But on uncollectible accounts?
Well, it's the ambulance, it's the water bills not being paid under foreclosures, it's some of the other. If they had a street redone and they. some of the other, if they had a street redone and their assessments not paid.
So the question is, if we went down...
She was going to the specific line.
So, yeah, if you look at under unclassified expenses, uncollectible accounts, last year, I think it was around 600,000 for uncollectible, okay? So if we went down to 550 this year, why would we think that it would gradually increase over the next five years? Again, if we're trying to correct that and get it down, why would we then see it go back up?
Because that's what the model, the model takes a five-year weighted average. So all those that pass history. So we kind of force ourselves into some of those assumptions.
Okay.
But, you know, we could sit and tweak it, but then we would end up tweaking it. This is a very, very high-level...
I think some of that with the ambulances, also the changing demographics.
I mean, it's, we could be kicking it up higher, but I think we just take the five-year average, start at 550 and run with it. But your point's well-taken, and that's another example. You could, you, there are, you can't shoot holes in this pretty easily, but we're taking it very...
Not trying to shoot holes, just trying to understand.
No, no, and that's where, I think the bigger point that Lori brings up is, should that have started at 600? That's probably...
So the 550, 2018, that was the weighted average over the last five years and then projection?
The last five years.
Okay, got it, I understand.
Nope, so very good point. So there's two things that hit into that. It's ambulance, it's tax write-offs, and then there's, we actually see quite a bit when we go to the county and we send on our tax bills, and they have delinquent, uncollected taxes for three years, they go and sell the properties. And anything that, when they sell that property, that they've absorbed that tax bill from us, if they can't collect that through the sale, they go back and rebuild everybody that they've paid them for. And it's at least over 100,000 every year that we're seeing that hits this account as well. And so it's property that's coming back on the tax roll that somebody lost because they didn't pay, but it's special charges that we have to reimburse because they weren't able to recover it through the sale of the property. So Mark did a really good job going over 18. So really where we wanted to end you with is page 19. And if you remember, when we started our discussion, we needed 1.69 to fund base assumptions. Where we're headed with expenditure restraint in the estimated calculation, which the only thing I really need is CPI for September, but it's very close, and this most likely will turn out to be the number we can increase by 1.67. And so...
The good is that they're really close in numbers, but that also says, remember, every assumption that we made said if we get, if we make these assumptions, we'd have to increase the levy by 4.5%. That is not, you know, and I had to clarify with people in the media, the council hasn't even discussed this item. This is still, we're saying, assuming that if the growth is necessary for $1,691, we have the capacity with an expenditure restraint to do that, but that doesn't say that it automatically happens. Plus, it also doesn't factor in other things that the council said they want us to consider on public safety and things like that. There are no assumptions made for any extra changes in that model. We just had a discussion recently about council phones and the texting requirements and things like that. I mean, that's a little thing, only seven phones, no big deal, but we got a whole bunch of staff people, so we're like, how is this going to impact us? That was a discussion that we had at staff meeting today. So all these other things that come into play, what new rules are going to get thrust upon us that we have to follow? And we have to cut other, we have to cut in other areas to manage those things. But coincidentally, the $1,672 for ERP is really close to the $1,691 that we projected, but that also, I mean, that says, oh, we're close, but that says we got very little room for adds unless we do cuts.
One other consideration, we've talked about this before, what happens when the economy starts to do this, which it will at some point, just no one knows what that point is? How is that going to affect us? And do we want to factor some scenarios in there that in 2021, it's going to do this?
Some kind of resiliency.
A backup plan, if, I mean, the recession of '08, '09, that was pretty severe, and that happened fast. The recoveries happened probably as fast, at a more accelerated rate. Do we want to factor that in or just assume?
Well, there's really, there's two separate answers for that. On one hand, if it happens and it affects the budget that the council's already approved, let's say a recession hits in December, right after the council approves a budget, the tax bills are out, the ink is dry on the budget, that's why you have a good fund balance. And we've done very well. Council's allowed us, through a good, solid policy, to be able to build that fund balance. And it's at, it's supposed to be at 16%, it's about 22%. So we have room to breathe if something were to happen in that scenario. If you're saying it's June and the economy's tanked, and now we're looking to the year ahead, and the state's saying, don't expect more in shared revenue, in fact, expect a cut and things like that, then you have to work in the here and now for that. And that would have to be real cuts, real reductions, not just because we can't afford it. It's like, not only can we not afford it, we don't have it.
Right, but to your assumption, it's almost like the five-year model. You don't know. You know, they're projecting that we could have one. They don't know. It could, you know...
But there should be something, a scenario that does happen, what do we do so we're not caught off guard?
We have it, we have it in place. It's our policy. It gives us our fund balance to cover that if it happens.
How long?
Well, till the next budget, then the next budget might mean we have to cut services, we have to cut employees, we have to cut things out. We don't do this...
We may not be able to retire debt as aggressively.
Right, we might only be able to do a half a mile of streets this year instead of a mile and a half. I mean, those are, you can't, I don't think you can project three, four, or five years on...
'08, '09 was as miserable as you could ask because not only did we, the economy started tanking very quickly, but also we had a really bad winter.
Right, so there's a lot of factors. So I think it's budget to budget, but I think if you have the reserves, you have a strong, you know, our TIF policy's strong, it's pagel, you know? So I think those are the things. I think it's through policy and how we kind of run the day-to-day operations is where you're going to make the cuts. You can't, I don't think you can say, well, in 2022...
I just don't want us to be caught off guard there. We should, here's the steps we would...
Well, we have, again, like I said, since you and I have been on council, we've changed our way of budgeting big-ticket items, you know? We've cut back a little bit on the number of street projects because our debt was getting way too high, and we've changed our TIF policy. So I think it's through policy, how we run the city is the best way that we can maybe protect ourselves from a major recession or something.
Oh, it's easier to cut.
Well, yeah.
I've been through these.
Couple of years, we've got, you know, now we've got the nomination arena, because corp is building, you know, the transload stations in there, so we may have some growth, expected growth coming that should help us, so. Fingers crossed.
So you'll see, it's after 7:00, you'll see what we have for the next time. Big part of that is CIP. That's really a big part of what we do, but we'll have a better idea where the state's going to be.
I think I mentioned, I will not be at that meeting, but I will be going to the planning commission meeting the day before and sitting in on...
The CIP discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Yeah, and we don't, that'll be good. This will give us, some of the numbers we presented tonight will be a little tighter, you know, in terms of state aids, we'll have a little better idea. And then the CIP structure and organization, it's not the CIP itself, it's just more where we are debt-wise. That's really the big thing. So, thank you.
Our next workshop is September 19.
Yep.
Same time, same room, place.
Channel.
Channel. All right, thank you for everyone.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.